All right, we will call the school board meeting for Monday, June 9th, 2025 to order. Now, we'll note, public access meeting. Typically, we have live streaming tonight, our system is down, but we are recording the meeting and members of the public will be able to see the recording. So we will move into the meeting's opening and roll call in their official form. Mr. Leepack?
Here.
Mr. Summers?
Here.
Mr. Shader?
Here.
Ms. Erler?
Here.
Mr. Lieber?
Here.
Mr. Pope?
Here.
Mr. Kowalski?
Here.
Ms. Mercer?
Here.
Ms. Bushman is excused. We have all. Thank you. You will stand with the question, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have no public comments, either email or people here this evening. So we will move into presentations. I'm going to note, we're moving into summer a bit. And so we, of course, do not have a student. Member of the board will be seeing, a new student will be coming with us come the next school year. We also, the Mandana Bliss Awards are on hold. Those happen during, of course, the school year. So those are two items typically on our agenda that will not be on these summer months. So we will now move into communications report with Sarah.
Hello. All right, communications report for June. We'll start off with that media coverage and public relations work. We had three press releases issued in May, including our, celebrating our retirees who had 981 years of service, which is tremendous. Celebrating that Mandana Bliss awardee, Taylor Nelson, and then also our SPAS Athletic Spring Signing Day. We had some really great stories picked up, including, one focusing on some of that behind-the-scenes work that our clerical staff do during Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. A really great piece on a project at CFC where students worked to make fishing rods all year and then got to take them out and try fishing rods with the local musky club. Really cool, kind of intergenerational opportunity for students who both haven't ever had a chance to fish and students that are out on the water all the time but got to use that, to try with even some of our own staff members, like Ms. Baumann was a part of that. Moving into taking a peek at our social media engagement was very high for the month. No surprises there. It's May, there's a lot going on, a lot of really good things to celebrate on social media. Total audiences for both Facebook and Instagram were up 1.5% for Facebook and 3% for Instagram. I've never seen us jump by 3% month over month, so I was really excited about that. Our impressions were up quite a bit as well. Total impressions were up 170% and total engagement was up 300%. So our numbers are going to look awful next month, but we're really going to celebrate that we went really well. Our most celebrated post was Dr. Volendorf shared he had some seniors show up very early. He went out at 5:30 to let his dog out and had this group of seniors hanging out on his lawn for their last, their last day. Nothing says we'll miss you like hanging out at your house. Website and digital engagement, traffic looks really steady, so total views. I swear it didn't touch her. I don't think I touched anything either, but maybe. Total views for the month. Sorry, let me catch up here in my thinking version. Were up 1.25% and 8.3% year over year. Our event count was up just a little bit. Most visited pages remained the same. We had no feedback submissions for user experience and feedback, which is great. I'm sure we'll have some come in as we continue on. And then really, our focus areas for summer will be to update that information on the website to reflect what's coming in '25, '26. And then also, we'll be doing an audit of those websites over the summer, just really seeing, making sure that their information is accurate, what worked, what didn't work. We'll take a look at some of those analytics. We'll have time to do that in June and July, so really looking forward to that. Special projects was really just getting everywhere that I could be. So we had photos from graduations, Mr. Van Ark, Teacher of the Year, that's probably my favorite photo album right now, Point of Discovery graduation, the track meet, and then also making sure we were sharing our stories via video. We had the SPAS highlight video of graduation, that was really nicely done. And then two end-of-the-year messages and celebrations. Looking ahead at key deliverables for comms over into July, we'll really be doing that summer work, so strategic planning and alignment of our '25, '26 communication plan, looking at back-to-school communication already, what do families need, kind of thinking about, you know, we're going to have that fridge page, right? What would be on that fridge page, so updating that. Continuing to do those website enhancements, storytelling, there's a lot that happens in the summer months, even if it's lower, just to take a peek and see what's behind the scenes. So are there maintenance stories we can cover, what's happening in summer school, what do summer meals look like? So there's still plenty of content for us. Looking at those metrics evaluate and evaluation, and then professional collaboration across mostly July. With that, if there are any questions for me, I'm happy to take them.
My members, any questions?
Thank you so much. I'm sorry that I.
And just thank you. You were like very busy.
I was, but that's time, right? Like, nobody makes them sleep in May. I'll sleep sometime.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks, Sarah. All right, we'll move into the graduation report. Sure, so we had an incredible school year. I want to just extend my heartfelt thanks to our incredible students and the staff with their hard work and dedication. To our families, thank you for sharing your children with us and for your trust and your partnership, and then to the community for their ongoing support and collaboration that's really making a lasting impact on our district. We created a school year full of growth, learning, and connection, and I want to share just a few powerful highlights with the board and with the community. Our reading growth in grades three through five has soared immensely. Our math proficiency has reached new highs at the elementary level. We've seen a significant reduction in cell phone disruptions during the school day. Our behavior incidents have declined and our attendance at the secondary schools has decreased significantly. So congratulations to the students and the staff for really, really, really doing a phenomenal job this year. There's so many good things that happened throughout the year, especially the end of the year, too many for me to really mention, but I do want to say thank you to the 12 Apostles Muskie Club, the teacher Gabby Goze at CFC, the Prime Water Anglers, the Walleye Warriors, and the Portage County Wildlife for that fishing experience that Sarah mentioned. It was just a really phenomenal event. Nicole and Jeff took a student and just had a great time, and many others did as well. So thank you for that. Congratulations to Steve Van Ark, who has been named the 96.7, 24.25 Teacher of the Year, which was presented by Cheryl Tyer. For those of you who don't know Steve, Steve is an incredible teacher that really has a gift of creating relationships and partnerships and connecting with every student at their level. So Steve is a very, very, very deserving individual for this award, so congratulations to Steve. Congratulations to the Badger Boys State Delegates, Teddy Westrick and Ben Hop. They get to spend a week in Eau Claire in June, which is a fantastic opportunity for them to dive into civics and to become citizens in a simulated governmental activity. So congratulations to those students who have earned that hands-on experience. Summer school begins June 16th. Again, we have record enrollments. We have 2,466 students enrolled in 5,085 courses. So if it wasn't for our summer school coordinators, Darla and Jen, and our Ed Services Department, our Food Services Department, our Transportation Department, we would not be able to provide this awesome opportunity, along with the many teachers who choose to come back and work during the summer months. So we're looking forward to a great summer school program. Community donations. Marshfield Clinic Health System has donated $5,600 to our district, and that will go towards an after-school group therapy sessions at our junior high schools next year. So congratulations to Jenny and her team for earning that $5,600 for additional therapy support. WASBO, which is the Wisconsin Association for School Business Officials, wanted to extend a congratulations to Tom Owens on his upcoming retirement and for his many successful years as an educator and a school business official. So thank you to WASBO for acknowledging Dr. Owens and all of his work. With that, I'm going to turn it over to G, who's going to give us an update on PD opportunity by WASB, some information on some athletic stuff, and then some highlights from the May 19th federal hearings. So G.
Yeah, thank you. The WASB Summer Learning Symposium is now in Stevens Point, I think you all know that, July 11th and 12th at Holiday Inn. I believe we can still register through Nicole, right?
Correct.
And she'll get us registered. I urge everybody to go to that. We've gone the last few years, and it's always nice to see people from other districts, regardless of the topics, which are always really good. It's nice to talk to people from other districts to see what's going on with them and compare it to our district. As, as you said, the WIA is working to adopt new NIL rules, trying to keep up with what's happening for high school students. And then, and then WASB also posted the May 19th congressional hearings in which RFK Jr. testified, and so did Secretary McMahon. So I combed through it and what I got out of it as far as education is concerned, RFK Jr. testified in support of Head Start funding. So that's good news. It doesn't look like it's going to go anywhere. And also, the Secretary McMahon testified that federal funding for school lunches and food programs will be continued, but through a different agency because they're looking at ultimately not having the Department of Education anymore. And one last thing, I was, it was interesting, they posted a number for the amount of money from federal money that goes to Wisconsin schools. It's $841 million goes to Wisconsin schools from the federal government. I don't know, is that, is that a lot of money? It's almost a billion, sounds like a lot. But that's how much money is coming to our schools from the federal government right now. So that's it, that's all I have to say.
G, does anyone have any questions for Tori?
I just want to note, five graduations with our high schools, and I can't even imagine how many graduations within all of our other schools. And just, I want to call out the work that staff has to do to prepare for those graduations. I mean, they run seamlessly because of people behind the scenes making sure to coordinate the parents, to coordinate the kids, to coordinate the ceremonies. Anyway, I just wanted to, it's, it's just a huge task, and I think sometimes we don't think about how much goes into that. I know in particular with SPAS, as we were like leaving the graduation, John was saying, well, the custodians literally were lined up at the back of the gym, and they were coming in and they had, what, two hours to break everything down and put everything up for Project Grad? And, I mean, it just hit me, there were probably eight, 10?
Ready to go.
People back there just ready to go to make that happen. So anyway, just thank you, everyone that like makes that special for, for our graduates.
You may. All right, we will move into the consent agenda. We are looking at the minutes of the organizational school board meeting, May 12th, 2025, the minutes of the prior school board meeting, May 12th, 2025, as well as our monthly bills, and also our, let me turn this over, and our employment recommendations. All right, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussing or questions? All right, we will have a roll call due to the several monthly bills, please. Mr. Shader?
Aye.
Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Lieber?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Mr. Leepack?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
All right, we'll move into business services, HR committee reports, and I'm going to carry it over.
Marty, the new boss!
Anyone remember to think about it ahead? So our May meeting was canceled, so we had quite a bit of business for the June 2nd meeting. Thank you, Mike, for stepping in. We had a couple of folks who were excused, so we needed a quorum. And we did talk about the citizen member applications that are going to be accepted for the two positions on the board that are open. So they'll be accepted through this Thursday, June 12th, and looking forward to filling those vacancies. We discussed the approval of the preliminary budget, and Mike will cover that in detail in a little bit here, so I'm going to gloss over that. We looked at the workers' compensation report. The bottom line is that the expense is going up a little bit. The premium will go up by $48,000 next year. This is due to an increase in the experience modifier, which just looks at the last three years worth of claims that we have had, and we had high numbers in 2021 and 2023, so those are kind of driving up a little bit. But Lynette has done really great work in petitioning to actually get that experience modifier taken down from what it was. So it is less than we could have been, and she continues to work on that. Everybody's on mic, send those three years worth of data. We looked at, we had a membership audit this year in terms of our number of students. This is done on a random schedule of approximately 25% of school districts per year. It's actually been five years since we got it, but you will get it on an average of once every four years. It looks at the audit membership count, and we look at April 2025, looks for any missed or miscounted students and procedural errors, but the, the great result that we have and that Mike has is if the audit is off by more than 1%, it triggers an automatic audit for next year. And that would be about 70 people. We were off by seven people, so we had a 0.1%. And Mike did a great job in terms of the numbers. The audit team didn't actually find that they were all self-reported numbers by Mike. So bottom line, we're doing a great job in terms of how we look at and organize and get ours and numbers in. We reviewed the financial statements. I would continue to recommend to everyone, if you don't want to look through the entire schedule of monthly bills every month, Mike does a great job pulling together what we call an exception report, and it compares this year's numbers to the average five-year numbers, and it is on a single page, and it gives a very quick glance at where we are far off or close to what that average looks like. It then looks pretty well this year. The budget projection that Mike gave is still trending positive, and in fact, has moved more positive. So just a projection, but somewhere in the 300K to 1.9 million in the positive, hopefully this year. And then the last thing that we had was an HR report from Beth discussing the addition of two paid training days for education assistance in 2025. Those will be held on August 20th and 21st. The reason behind this is, one, the number of vacancies, especially in our special education EAs, the turnover for EAs remains high at 22%. And they looked at that and said, okay, well, this is not all due to salary, there's also a need for training and support and additional onboarding of our EAs. And so this is put in place to foster a sense of inclusion and belonging with that group, specifically to give them some bolstering. So that will be in place this year, and then our July meeting is canceled, so we won't wait again until August.
Great, thank you, Marty. Beth, we'll turn it over to Mike.
Well, we got the screen working.
Thank you, Brian.
I don't have the clicker, do I? Need to click.
Brian's had it.
All right, so let's see if this works. It does. All right, well, it's that time of year, again, it's June, that's when we bring the preliminary budget to the board. The preliminary budget is an incomplete budget. There's quite a few things that are missing. We just don't know what those are yet. I've listed a bunch of them on the screen, but we still need to have one. And the reason why we have one is because we're going to have bills in July, August, September, and part of October. So we have to pay those bills until we finalize our budget in late October. And so that's why we bring a preliminary budget to you folks to approve. And it is under state statute that we can do that. Okay, cool, I was going to say next slide, but I've got this. All right, so this is our summary page. There's a lot of information on this page. It's the page we're going to start with, or the slide we're going to start with, and it's the slide we're going to end with, and everything in between is where these numbers come from. Okay, so just looking at the left side, we've got the funds, 10 through 80, and then we have an expenditure column, and a revenue column, and a tax levy column. And that's your total expenditures, total revenue by each of those funds. At the bottom of the table, we have our total for all funds. So total expenditures for all funds is $148,889,000 for revenue. It's actually the revenue total and the tax levy total that makes up the total revenue of $149,199,000. So the 2000, so just going below that, the 2025, '26 levy came out to be $47,144,000. That's an increase of 9.56% from last year. This year's equalized valuation was $7,131,000. We had to assume a 6% increase. We don't actually know what that's going to be yet, we won't find out till October 1st. So we had to make an assumption or an estimate, and so we increased it by 6%. So taking the tax levy and dividing it by the equalization gives you the tax levy rate, which came out to be $6.61 per thousand. That's a 3.28% increase over last year. But as you may recall, when we had the referendum, we were projecting a $6.96 per thousand, and so we're under that, so we're on target. That's probably going to change, the preliminary budget will change, but we're trying to stay on target. Okay. All right, so here's the actual preliminary budget. There's three columns, the 2023, '24 audited column, that's the actuals from that year, the 2024, '25 unaudited column, that's the, we don't know the actuals from '24, '25, so that's actually our budget that we're currently under. And then the '25, '26 budget column, that's our preliminary budget. So that's what we're taking to the board today. Going down, the first, first chart is the general operating fund, that's Fund 10. So our total revenues in Fund 10 are $115,516,000. The total expenditures are $113,745,000. So we have, in this budget, this preliminary budget, a surplus of 1.7 million. So that's going to change, it will change. I don't know which direction it will go, but it will definitely change. We do, we are aiming to have a surplus because we do need to rebuild our fund balance, so that's a goal. The next one is the special projects fund, that's Fund 21 and Fund 27. Fund 21 would be your donation fund, and Fund 27 is your special education fund, and that's usually really close to being balanced. It's a little off because of our donations. The next one is our debt service fund, that's Fund 38 and 39. Fund 38 is our non-referendum debt, and Fund 39 is our referendum-approved debt, and they're combined on this table. All right. Next. The capital projects fund, that's Fund 46. That's tied to our 10-year capital improvement plan, and so you can see the revenue is pretty small compared to the expenditures. We don't know how much money we'll have to put into that. It might not be that much, but we built that up over time. Our food service fund is the next one, that's Fund 50, and that one's balanced. And then our trust fund is Fund 73, we don't use that anymore, so that's all zeroed out. And the last one is Fund 80, our community service fund, and there's some small amounts, well, to me, small amounts compared to the rest of the budget, budget into community service. The table, the second table from the bottom, that has your total expenditures for all funds, once again, it's the same as what we had on the summary slide. So we have $148,889,000 in total expenditures for all funds. We do add in there the inter-fund transfer, and that's $13,215,000. That's mainly going to special ed. There is a little bit in there going to Fund 46 for our parking lot at SPAS, but most of it's going to special ed. And why, you're probably wondering, why do we subtract that out? Well, when we have an inter-fund transfer, we expense in Fund 10 and we receive as a revenue in Fund 27, and so they really offset each other. So it's probably better to look at expenditure when you take that out. And so by taking that out, we have our total expenditures of $135,674, and that is a 2.79% increase over last year. And then the bottom table, that is our property tax levy that we saw on the first slide. So again, you can see the total school levy of $47,144,000 there at the bottom in that table. Okay, now we're going to break it down into a little bit more detail. So this is revenue by source, and source means it's telling us where the money is coming from. So the source numbers are on the, in the very left column, and then the descriptions that go along with those sources are in the next column. And then the columns following that are the different funds. So we're just breaking this down in greater detail, but ultimately, it comes out to be the same information as on that first slide. So if you look at the very bottom right corner, you'll see our total revenue is $149,199,000. And again, that's for all funds for this preliminary budget. Now we're going to look at expenditures. So we have our expenditures first by object. Now, as you remember, when Tom gave this presentation, he'd hold up his pen to explain what object means. Object is basically, you know, what is the item that we're purchasing? So I don't have a pen, but I have a pencil, and so this would be a general supply, which would be an object 411. So on this, this is major objects that we broke this down by. You would find that under the 400 object, non-capital objects, and it was purchased in business services, so that's going to be a Fund 10 purchase. And then again, the bottom right corner, that's our total expenditures for all funds, same as the first slide, that's $148,889,000. We also have the total expenditures, I should point out, for each fund as well. So fund, the general fund is the $113,745,000 number in that first column at the bottom. Moving on to the next slide, this is going to be our expenditures by semi-detailed function, so just another way to see expenditures in a little more detail, this time by function. So I mentioned the pencil, object 411. Function tells you where it's going to be used. So this is being used in the business office, so that is a $252,000 function. And those function numbers, again, are down in the left column, the very left side, along with their descriptions next, followed by all the different funds, and then the fund totals are at the bottom. And in the right-hand corner, we're back to the same number that we had on the very first slide, at $148,889,000, which is the expense for all funds. And the next page, this is the best page, so I'm going to try not to bore you with it. This is the revenue limit worksheet. So those of you who So those of you who really like filling out tax forms, you would like filling out a revenue limit worksheet. It's just like that. Only difference is we're filling it out early, so there's a lot of things on here that we don't know yet. So we have to project and make estimates and things like that, and I'll point those out as we go through it. But I'll try to go through it relatively fast, I don't wanna bore you too much. In the upper right corner, in the yellow, and then followed by the number eighty-nine million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, that's carried over from last year's revenue limit worksheet, and that gives us our base revenue. So that's where you start. So it carries over from last year, and that's where we start. Going down that column, there is, you'll see the number seven thousand one hundred four. That is our twenty-four, twenty-five, three-year rolling membership average. So that's the membership for this current year. That's calculated in the table just to the left of that. It's a three-year rolling average. If you go below that seven thousand one hundred four number, you'll see seven thousand eighty-one. That's the new three-year rolling average for twenty-five, twenty-six, for next year. That is also calculated in the table to the left of it, and you'll see under two thousand twenty-five in red, those numbers actually match two thousand twenty-four. So what we do is we just use the same numbers, because we don't know what our membership count's gonna be until September. Then, under the seven thousand eighty-one, the next number, or the next number I wanna point out is two hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars. That is a declining enrollment exemption because our enrollment, rolling average went down from one year to the next. Now, that might not happen when we do our final budget. It might go up, we don't know. But for the purpose of the preliminary budget, it went down, so we get this temporary, one-time decline in enrollment exemption. And then at the very bottom is the equalized value again, in yellow, that's seven billion, one hundred thirty-one million number. And again, we don't know what that is yet as well. So a lot of things that we have to estimate for right now.
What is an ICS independent?
What?
Um, you have the summer FTE, September FTE, new ICS independent.
Those are those independent charter schools? I'd have to double-check that again. I forget what that number actually totally means. We didn't have that for quite a number of years. We started getting that, and so I'm pretty sure it's kind of like the independent charter schools. Can I look that up for you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Alright. I also found something I didn't think about.
I'm sorry. I don't remember seeing it before.
Yeah.
No, and you're right, we didn't have it like four years ago. So it's a new thing for us. Okay, so on the second page, at the top, we have our twenty-five, twenty-six base revenue again. So that's where we started on the previous page. If we then start there, on the second page of the revenue limit worksheet as well. And then we take our membership of seven thousand one hundred four, that was from twenty-four, twenty-five. You divide that out, and that gives us our base revenue limit per member, which is twelve thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars. If you look over to the left column, you'll see the eleven thousand in yellow, that is the low revenue limit ceiling. We are above that now. We used to not be. We are now, and we're above that because we passed the referendum. So the eight point seven five million that we got last year is actually part of that new revenue limit. Okay? And then if you see that three hundred twenty-five dollar number, that's how much we get to add to the revenue limit per pupil. And so that's, that we know we're gonna get. Okay, so you add those together, you get your new revenue limit per member, the twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and seven cents, times our new membership enrollment, and we get the revenue limit without exemptions of ninety-one million, three hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Now, I won't bore you with all the exemptions, because that's the revenue limit without exemptions. So that's the next step, is you have to add those in. But I will point out one of them, and that's line eight E, it's in yellow. It says five million, two hundred fifty thousand. Do you guys know what that is? That's, that's the referendum, the other piece of it, getting added back in. And so when you add in all those exemptions, you get to that line eleven number of one hundred and two million, three hundred forty-nine thousand. That's our revenue limit with all exemptions. So that's the maximum amount of revenue we have authority to, or that we can get. Okay, below that, that sixty million dollar number, that is another estimate, that's state aid. So once you have your revenue limit, you subtract out your state aid, and what's left is what you can levy, okay, if the board chooses to do so. So what's left is forty-two million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, okay? Then you go to fourteen, A, B, and C, that, those are, that's how we break down that revenue limit. Fifteen, A, B, C, and D, those are the, the amounts that are outside of the revenue limit. That's for like our referendum-approved debt, Fund Thirty-Nine, that's where most of that goes, and our community service. And so then that gives us our total levy that you saw on the very first slide, forty-seven million, one hundred forty-four thousand, giving us a levy rate of six dollars and sixty-one cents per thousand, or if you wanna use the decimal on this sheet, point zero zero six six per dollar. Okay? That's the revenue limit worksheet. Anybody wanna work through one of those with me sometime? Alright, next, we have our tax levy summary, so we're back to that first slide again. Again, the point of this slide is give you a bunch of information, but to really show you the levy amount of forty-seven million, one hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars. That's a nine point five six percent increase over last year, which amounts to six dollars and sixty-one cents for our levy rate, and that's per thousand dollars. And that's a three point two eight percent. And just once again, our target is to stay within what we told, what we projected for the referendum, which is six dollars and ninety-six cents, and we're below that right now, so that's good. Questions?
That's a lot of information.
Yeah, and I went through it fast.
Fortunately, it's a preliminary budget, so we'll have the chance to see this as we move forward, and as the numbers become literally more firm, as the state is giving us the actual numbers, and we're seeing the pupil counts, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, and it's really good to remember that, that first slide that I brought up, where it's, it is incomplete, it will change as we assemble the final budget, but we need it right now so that we can pay our bills through the summer and into October. Other questions?
What is an energy efficiency exemption?
That's a good question that I can answer. So, you, energy efficiency, at one point, we could, how do I describe this? We could apply for it, you know, would allow us to, to spend money on energy efficiency, and then what happens is, however much you spend on it, because you basically borrow money to do energy efficiency projects, and then that debt actually kind of gets paid back by the state, and you can actually see it on the revenue limit worksheet where you're pointing to. So will you see energy efficiency, that number? And look down. Yep. Look down all the way to where the levy is right here. Is that number? See how close they are? So for those energy efficiency proj, what he's looking at is for paying back our non-referendum debts, two million seventy thousand, I think. Yep. We had to borrow money to do those projects, but we're getting most of it back. We're getting two million, what, thirty-six thousand back? And you can't do that anymore, not for another one, what is it, a thousand years?
Yeah, something like that. So, 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 there was the option for energy exemption, and it would allow you to go above your cap for energy-efficient projects. And our district was fortunate, we had created a facilities review, and so we had all of the projects as of like September or October, prior to the time that Governor Walker did that thousand year, you can't do this anymore. We had all the projects there. And so the board that year actually approved about ten million dollars' worth of energy exemption projects that fit within that law in December of that year. And at the end of December, you could no longer do that. But because we were just fortunate, we had the facilities review, we had all the information, we knew with our consultants, as well as our administration, that all of these projects fit, and the board unanimously approved that. So we actually wound up, as a board, we had those ten million, and then we went to referendum for the seventy-five point nine million, that were all kind of part of that facilities referendum. So we just, we were able to get in under the wire just because we, the timing, we knew what we needed to do, and the, and the timing allowed us to do that.
Yeah, and not all districts were able to do that.
They were.
Lucky. Other questions?
Nice to have Mike.
Thanks, Mike, for the history on that. I didn't, I didn't know all of that.
Yeah.
That was helpful.
So, so we will be, well, and part of it, the consultants was, when we hired them initially, they told us that they would work with us to identify sources of funding for the projects that, that the board felt were essential for the district, and we were fortunate because about ten million of them fit within that. But that's no longer available, unless the legislature would change their mind. Thanks, Mike.
I will recommend the adoption of the preliminary twenty-five, twenty-six, what you're presenting.
Another second.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing done, all recent paper with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. We'll move into the Ed Services Committee report, and I'll turn it over to Jim.
The three items that we talked about are gonna be talked about here again, so I'm not gonna say anything about that. I have a question. The review for the citizen members of those committees, can, can we state the dates of those things are gonna happen?
Yes.
In the order, we can't talk about this right now. Just on the minutes.
Why don't I send something out to the board meeting? Yep. Alright. I will jump into the information that Chris presented in regards to our new ELA resource that we'll have next school year. The board made a decision to approve that recommendation for CKLA. We have already started professional development for our staff, that started on May sixteenth. They had a program overview, and they broke out into certain grade levels. We are gonna have access for families in August, so that's gonna be a good thing, that they'll have the availability to check out those resources. Print materials have been ordered. The plan is for those to be in the buildings in just a couple of weeks, so staff can come in, pick up those resources, take them home if they so choose, over the summer, to become familiar with those resources. Then PD will start back up again in August, specifically on August twenty-sixth, and then will continue throughout next school year. So CKLA Amplify will be in to provide professional development, and we will have some people that are considered coaches or more knowledgeable of the resource to provide additional support for staff throughout the year. So thanks to the board for providing us the opportunity for that resource, and we'll continue to give you updates as things progress next school year. I'm then gonna turn it over to Darla and Jeff, who will offer us some information on the end-of-year data report.
Hi, I'm Darla Tenoski, I'm the elementary curriculum and instruction coordinator, and I'm going to share with you tonight the elementary portion of our end-of-year data for reading and math. This update is provided annually, and it highlights the universal screening data from all of our K six students. As you can see on our Ames Web report for reading, the percentages that you see there are students scoring above the forty-fifth percentile, and in all of our grade levels had shown significant growth, with the exception of kindergarten, they were down a little bit. What we're finding out is that kindergarten and first grade are the areas that are the grade levels that we're focusing and all of our attention, and PD, and a lot of PD and support around. First graders are our lowest performing group. One, one of the reasons that, when you look at this reading data, is that, this is the, in the fall, first grade students are expected to do the oral reading fluency, and so they're expected to read up to something like forty-some words a minute, so they're expecting to come in to first grade reading, and we're finding that that is not always the case. And so that's one area that we, by diving into this data, we know that we need to provide our, provide our support. Cory had mentioned earlier about our tremendous growth in the last three years, has been an ELA fourteen percent increase, and so we're very excited about that, because our strategic goal is fifteen, and of course, we're not gonna stop there. And in math, we're already about that at seventeen percent. The personalized, the personalized reading plan data. Act twenty legislation requires districts to provide a personalized reading plan for all students in K three who score below the twenty-fifth percentile on the Ames Web screening data. And this chart here shows that we want, the decrease is in green, and we want the decrease, we want less reading plans. And as you can see, there was a slight increase in kindergarten from winter to spring, but if you look at the overall numbers, we're doing a good job, and we're, we are very confident that the reading plans that we have in place and the additional supports that we have in place are, are indeed doing the job. And so we, it's state statute that we'll report these numbers to DPI by July fifteenth, so there's different numbers that we have to provide. This year, we started, even though there's fall numbers there, the legislation had us start in January, this year will be right away in the fall, so we're ready to go, and really anxious to see how CKLA can support those additional students. The last slide there is the Ames Web Plus Math, and as you, those numbers there are the percentage of students that are above the forty-fifth percentile, and in all areas, fourth grade was, had, from winter to spring, had a zero percent growth, and kindergarten had a negative, negative growth, but other than that, we had all of our students, there was an increase. And as you can see, those percentages above the forty-fifth percentile are anywhere from fifty-five percent clear up to seventy-six percent. So once again, our math curriculum is strong, and doing a good job there. Is there any questions on the elementary?
How many kids are in elementary, on average?
Twenty-two on average. At elementary.
In, in Kinder.
In kindergarten, like total.
Across the, district-wide.
District-wide. I just pulled that for some, it's twenty-two about K through six at each grade level, but if you want kindergarten, Alex, just give me one second, and I can tell you that. So for next year, our estimate at kindergarten district-wide right now, at kindergarten is seventeen point seven. He wants to know total number of students in kindergarten. Total number of students, three hundred and eighty-nine predicted for kindergarten next year, and that's a roll-up from four kids from this year.
So if that's like an average of, you know, between four and five hundred kids per grade, in first grade with, you know, one hundred and seventy-five, that's twenty-five percent, over twenty-five percent? in first grade with, you know, 175 is 25%, over 25%. Right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Ooh.
Yep.
So, so is this a, like one day test or a number of days testing?
I'm glad you brought that up, Meg, because it is a snapshot in time. And it is.
I'm hoping the kindergartens were, they were just all having a bad day.
Kindergarten, first grade, it's one to one testing. And yeah, it takes a little bit, but it's, it's just like a snapshot. Like for each student, it takes maybe 15, 20 minutes. I mean, there's not, it is short, it's not a lot. But it's norms throughout the nation. So this is what we're, what we go off of. Gee?
You know, at our committee meeting, I asked Chris, what about comparisons to other schools? And I think, was this the data? They said that other schools don't even, well, it's not reported out yet, right? Report this data.
Well, we don't get this, this data from other schools. But the data that we do get from other schools is the state testing data. And that doesn't come out until.
November.
But other, other schools use N what?
Right, but we, unless we reached out to every single one of those districts and asked for their information, there's not like a database where we can easily go in and do comparisons.
I think this was the data that Chris said, he looked at other districts and they didn't even post it.
And some districts don't, they may use a different assessment than what we do. So it's really, it's, it's hard to determine what they're using.
Most districts will not post this type of information on their website.
All right, on the secondary, thanks Darla.
Well, just to underscore, the numbers, like, they're good. I mean, they're all in the green and they're in the green by significant percentages. And, you know, it sounds like you're optimistic that we're going to be able to keep moving that needle.
I'm a part of the letters training with, for the portion, the face-to-face portion. I've been in charge of doing that training for our K-3 teachers. And I will say that that, that has attributed to the success that we're seeing because it really, it's an intense training. And so I'm going to just reiterate, thank you for approving those six extra PD days for our K-3 teachers because that has been very, very helpful. And it also gives our teachers a chance to collaborate across district. So it's been, that has helped a lot.
Thank you, Darla.
All right, so I'll go ahead and take care of the secondary part. Before we get into that, we just, Chris kind of walked through in this part at Ed Service. And we're going to quickly here, just kind of a reflection back on our report card data. So we really went all the way back and started looking at the 16, 17 school year. It's one of the things Chris and I wanted to identify is, you know, where did our downward trend occur? So you'll see here, we identify in the two slides that are up, kind of when that started, and really up through the 22, 23 school year. Darla, there we go. I just had to say it and then it worked. So here you'll see the 23, 24 school year. So as we reported out earlier, we did see a jump during the comparison between 22, 23 to 23, 24. We went up to 64.5. One of the things, and Darla already discussed this, that we really think is a huge celebration is us looking at our ELA and our math growth data, right? One of the things that we talked about elementary and secondary was really that we're targeting 15% growth in five years. We've already exceeded that in math. And in ELA, we are 0.8 away from hitting that target already, which I think is a huge celebration. The amount of work that I watch teachers do and leaders do around this through their continuous improvement plan is really, really impressive. And people are working extremely hard. But that is one of those pieces of data. So on the bottom of this, you'll see our secondary data is next. And this is the screener. So just as a note for this group, we're using A reading. This will be our last year. So next year, starting next year, secondary will be shifting over to Ames Web as well. But this is our A reading data as of right now. So this is taken three times during the course of the school year by our students. So if you look at the far left column, that really identifies our grade levels. And what we looked at for both elementary and secondary was our middle of the year to our end of the year data. That is the window. And I did talk, Alex brought up some really good points. We didn't look at beginning of the year. And part of the reason that I picked this is at the secondary level, when our teachers write their SLOs, which is their educational goals, they look and they use their second semester data because we rotate kids a lot, right? So we were reflective on that. Also, that's what we've reported out in elementary. So at each one of those increments, for middle of the year to end of the year, we were able to show growth. And that's what you see next to those grade levels. Total taking it and looking at it, we saw a 17% increase. And this is the number of students who are at the 45th percentile or better. The next three columns going across, those are our different testing windows. So you have our fall window, winter and spring. The number that you see in black is the percentage that those students scored. So we had that percent of students who scored at 45th percentile or above. The number in, in green next to it, which is great that it's green, green is good, that indicates we look back to last year. And we look back at that seventh grade. For example, if we look at the seventh grade number there, you'd see that's at 55%. And next to it, you have a plus seven. So the seventh graders the previous year scored 48%. So we went up 7% in that testing window. So you'll see across the boards, with the exception of spring of 10th grade, we saw an increase when we could look at this year compared to last year, which is a, which is a huge success for us. I also did a cohort comparison. So I looked at our eighth grade data and looked back, I looked at the eighth grade data end of the year. Then I compared it to seventh grade end of the year. I looked at our ninth grade, looked back at eighth and 10th grade and looked back at ninth. When I looked at that and did the cohort comparison, we had a 5% increase in our number of students who saw growth hit that 45th percentile or better. When I look at this, this is the data, but I always talk to my principals, so what? So we're actually going to be starting that discussion tomorrow and then carrying it in next week. Number one, we're going to continue our focus on rigor. We're moving in the right direction. I've got some other exciting data that we're going to share that talks about that. But we really want to continue to focus on rigor and high expectations for our students. But at the same time, looking at how we're providing support for our students. So at SPAS, effectively leveraging our PLT time. At our junior highs, the targeted supports that we do. We want to make sure we're hitting our students' needs. And all buildings will be bringing the screener back in as part of their academic growth data. The next one is math. In math, we saw a little bit more of a mixed bag, which is more similar to what we've seen in the past. When we look at our middle of the year to the end of the year comparison, that first column on the left side, two grade levels with growth and two grade levels where we did see a decline. However, overall, we did see a 4% increase in the number of students who are hitting our 45th percentile benchmark. Then the three columns going across, we did update this, Alex caught it. We had a couple that were listed in green that were at zeros. So what you'll see here is numbers in green. Again, that's comparing last year's score to this year. We still had more green than we had anything else, which meant we saw growth. However, we did have three arrows, areas where it was neutral. We didn't see growth in three of our areas. And then we did see a decline when you look at our 10th graders for that winter assessment. Cohort comparison, I did that same comparison here. Here we saw 6% increase. When we looked at the end of the year comparison for those different cohort year groups, looking a year back, we saw 6% increase in our number of students who are hitting that 45th percentile benchmark. Principals, when we look at math, one of the things that we're really focusing on and we're really excited about Ames Web with this is FastBridge is a good screener. But it gives teachers very little actionable data. It's really, really hard to get teachers excited about it. And it's hard to get kids excited about it because there's not a lot of intake and say, this will help you be better. This will support our teachers and support our students. Ames Web actually does a full item analysis, which is a huge component of what we're looking for and what FastBridge just doesn't offer us. So we're really excited for that. Because what we really want to focus on next year is improving our communication to parents about the value of this assessment and working with our classroom teachers to bring that in more frequently to students. So students see this as a really good check of how I'm doing. So those are going to be really big focus areas for us when we think about math. The next one is a lot of hard work. This is our preliminary assessment information. So we got a chance to see our data for our pre-ACT. And this is one of the things I really like to do. I know Jim and I have had conversations about this. The state report card tells one story, but I want to look at the hard data behind it, right? So what did we see from our pre-ACT so far? Our math STEM, which is math and sci, and science, and our reading scores all showed growth in ninth and 10th grade, which is huge for us. That lets us see a snapshot of our students getting the skills they need. And then our forward testing data, we saw significant growth in ELA in reading and growth in math as well at our secondary sites, which is huge. And ACT across the boards. Every single tested category in ACT, we went up in, which are some really positive pieces for us. I talked to Chris a little bit about forward data for elementary. It's a mixed bag. But again, this is no growth data, it's only our achievement data. So that's where we do have to wait for the state report card. We don't get the growth data until a little bit later. So that was one we are extremely excited about. These two slides are ones that Chris and I will always put in there. They're slides we always provide for our principals. The top one represents the, our changing demographic that we're seeing within our school community and the change in diversity. And we always work with our, our principals because we talk about within your school improvement plan, are you working to making sure we're supporting growth for all of our students? Is there any areas where we can be doing better? So that shows our demographic. And then the one below it is our socioeconomic. As we've seen in our overall trend, that number continues to rise at the number of students that we see who are socio-economically disadvantaged. Our free and reduced lunch percent is sinking at 41.9%. And we are expecting this, if our trend continues, we're expecting an increase again as we look to next year. So what's next for us? Elementary, really developing those personalized reading plans that Darla talked about for our K through three students. And then focus, and then continuing to prepare for that full implementation of our ELA resource at elementary level. I've got quite a few friends who are elementary teachers and it is really exciting to see how energized they are to actually have something new and available to them to support students. The secondary level, we're really working on preparing our students for those state assessments. And what we're really trying to shift the conversation to is how we bring those types of questions into the classroom. So students are able to engage with those more frequently at that high level of rigor. And then we'll be continuing our analysis of course options to ensure that we're preparing our students for future success. One last thing, and I had to tell Cory this, I was super excited about. We've been doing a ton of work this year around truancy, absenteeism. We were able to pull the report, and I'll provide more at the board retreat. But our number of absenteeism at the secondary level, now this is full day and all the way down to one period, but it went down 6,000 absences across our secondary sites, which is absolutely huge. And that is a ton of work by a ton of people. So a huge celebration.
Which impacts this data because if students are here, we can work on helping them to get better. So that's.
Does that have a report card too?
Yes, it is. That should help.
That should help.
We're hoping.
Yeah. Any questions?
The, something to point out is that the overall score is not truly academic. That's overall. And that new scoring is, I mentioned that Ed Services is a new parameters on how they calculate the latest one compared to the, back to 2017 or 2016, 17. And so next year too, since you're switching screenings, the data like you're showing now won't be really possible, at least to any relative accuracy.
This data that's here is district data, not.
No, no, but they're changing.
Not forward tests.
But you're not changing your screening data and how you.
Yeah, so you'll.
How we do the, how we do the English or the reading and the math that you have in these will be hard to go backwards to correct error.
Yep, and that's what you'll see, Jim, is for a year, it'll look a little bit like what Chris and Darla had here. That first column and just, just the black reporting out. So we'll report out, we won't compare back. It's so unbelievably different. But then as we go forward, we'll continue to add that in. And again, that's why we try to look at not just our screeners, not just our singular state assessments, but all of those different pieces for all of our teachers.
Any other questions?
I appreciate you taking a look back from secondary level to the kids who are coming to the secondary level. I mean, I think it's really important for us to be able to see kind of how they're making that transition and whether those numbers are improving or declining and how we can help support them. Because once, once they get to high school, it's pretty serious business for kids.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Next, we've got the K-6 ELA Resource Special Development Plan.
I talked about.
We did that already.
Oh, that's right, that's right. All right, then we're going to move into Student Services with Jenny and just Personnel, Alibi and Special Education and Special Education Performance Indicators.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. I haven't gotten to present in a few months, so it's wonderful that you're all here. Welcome summer and thank you for being here for all the important presentations tonight. Today, I'm going to report to you two annual reports that come to our district to help us understand overall, how is our programming and supports and deliverable actions for our students in special education? As well as programs that help students while before being identified in special education, perhaps not have to have that level of support. So we'll go through two reports. One that helps us understand, do we have this proportionality in special education? And then also, how are we doing on our state performance indicators? Every year, we get a report that tells us how are we doing with things, both compliance, such as like deadlines versus results, how are students actually doing for the things that we're doing within our schools? Within the Department of Public Instruction, we're required to take a look at this data. And so is the DPI. There are different federal regulatory requirements. And each state's required to take a look at their state performance indicators. Each state uses different, you know, perhaps assessments, like a forward exam isn't the same as each state. But we're all required to have similar benchmarks to understand how is your state performing and are you meeting those expectations of IDV? So in general, the data that we're provided is about a year old. Sometimes data is even two years old. But for the most part, our 2024 report that was issued to us this year and 2025 is data from a previous school year. And it helps us understand, do we have disproportionality in special education? Which is a fancy term for, do we have students of a variety of races who are over identified compared to our population of students enrolled in the district? So it would be unexpected that that number of students or that percent of students are either placed in special education, eligible for special education, disciplined, or getting certain services than we would expect statistically. Right now, we have one area that we've been working on and has been reported to us from the DPI that we need to improve on. And so we've had a plan this last year that we'll talk about. And not to spill the beans, but overall, we've done very, very well and made some really awesome growth that we've been very excited about. And so I can't wait to show you some of that data. I know you have that in your board packets as well. Right now, the area that we've been focused on is disproportionate identification in special education. Specifically for students who are categorized within multirace as their racial category, that students from that racial category are more likely than other peers of different racial categories to be evaluated after a referral to meet the criteria of emotional behavioral disability or EBD. Right now, we do not have a disproportionality in placement or discipline, which is a huge success. And ongoing supports, what that means is that within our district, placement means that our students of a certain racial category more frequently placed into a restrictive placement. Those would typically be off-site placements, such as an alternative learning center, a school that's only for students with special education. And so that's not an area of concern, which is great news. Also, discipline, we have no significant discrepancy in any area of disability that students of a certain racial category are over suspended or expelled compared to other students within our students with disabilities. So of course, we always monitor those areas. We always want to make sure we're continuing to support and chip away at anything that we can do to reduce barriers or improve discipline or placement. But it's not an area we've had to have an action plan. What we are required to do, to do as a result of the identification is to come up with a continuous improvement. is to come up with a continuous improvement plan. So we take a look at, what do we see in both our data and our knowledge of our system to be main reasons that we're getting the results that we're getting right now? Why would that be? And then develop strategies or a hypothesis of, if we put these things in place, it's likely that we'll lower that risk for students of a certain disability category or a certain racial category to be identified into special education. I get to meet with the DPI at least three times a year. We have monitoring calls and they closely look at our data. They look at our budget. They look at how we're doing with our plan and how many students have been affected by our early intervention programs. As a result of the identification, we are required to set aside 15% of our special education formula funds to provide early intervention services. So these are services that would be provided to any student. They don't have to have an IEP. And the focus is on students who don't have an IEP that we've identified either through parent nomination, screening, teacher nomination, or just general classroom needs that they likely need some higher level of boost in that area of either social skills, emotional skills, behavior skills, executive functioning, could be all those things. And that we're able to provide them with individualized or group interventions well before a referral to special education or hopefully not at all if interventions are effective. This year, we've made measurable progress in decreasing racial disproportionality for students among our multiracial category in being identified as emotionally, as having an emotional behavioral disability. I've included in that third bullet, our risk ratio. So that's a number that you want to go down. So you could see back in 2023, students who were in the category of multiracial were 3.298 times more likely than other peers in other racial categories to be identified and placed into special education. We've been able to reduce that this year down to 2.5297. The DPI shows to us that an adequate amount of progress is a reduction of .25. And so we've doubled that. Our reduction was .5599. So certainly that's been a huge area of celebration for us that overall, the supports that we've been able to provide have reduced that risk ratio for our students in the multirace category. That was double the reduction than expected. And the DPI let us know that they felt like our plan was high quality and that clearly the budget that we prepared met students' needs. Overall, in tracking our CCEIS services, we track that every month so far. In general, our number shows that we've supported at minimum a number of 660 total students in our school, which we're really happy with. Some of the supports that we've provided by using the set aside funds are listed in the little file folders for you so that you know what we've focused on this year. And one of our biggest takeaways in looking at our data and our observations and our systems is that professional development was key in improving our outcomes for students. We have wonderful staff and they're the powerhouse within the district. The more they know, the more tools they have, the more teaching strategies they have, it shows up in our students' outcomes. And so that was our biggest investment within our CCEIS program. Within the blue file folder, we really focused on our leaders. So our building leaders, district leaders, special education leaders. And we provided them monthly professional development with a specialist who helped us understand additional practices, mindsets around adaptive change. It's certainly easy to come up with really checkbox things that we can do, meet a deadline, meet a compliance, but it's much harder to think more broadly about systems change and what can we do differently in our mindsets and our day-to-day practices. So he certainly brought to us a variety of information, but also what can we apply to groups that have been marginalized within our system? And challenged us to think each month about different systems that we could bring back, that we learned about to the building or to our specific groups to help them think about students who are, we are not yet serving well within our system. We also worked with CISA V to take a look at our EMLSs or that, those kind of tiers of support. So they've met with us over a series of meetings to take a look at what are, what is our guidance when we're providing tiers of supports to students? Is there anything we're missing? Are we aligning that to state framework? And tomorrow, we even have a large training for that and time for each building to take a look at, do they have a continuum of supports for all students that can escalate from, I don't, I can benefit just fine from the classroom instruction all the way up to students who need really individualized care? Within the pink file folder, we focused on professional development that was provided to many groups, both educators and administrators, and tied within to our CISA V work. We provided training on tier two through Character Strong. So those are small group instruction, targeting different social and behavioral skills and executive functioning, as well as we will have a tier three training this week on Character Strong, which are for our students who have the need for the most specialized or custom social, emotional behavior supports within our schools. We also selected several leaders within behavior supports to attend a certification process to be leaders for tier two. So we were able to send three of our staff, our two behavior support specialists, and then one of my student service coordinators to that. So they're our resident experts and go-to and can really help us with navigating our systems and setting those up for good success. We also had staff attend the National PBIS Conference in Chicago and brought back a variety of strategies for our attendance work group that Jeff has headed up. And as he shared with you, we had some really wonderful outcomes as a result of a collection of information that has been brought to that group. We've also had a work group that's worked every month, taking a look at overall attendance. And some of our buildings have been able to use not just what came from PBIS, but also from Character Strong. They offer a variety of interventions where you can intervene very quickly. For example, assigning a student a mentor and that you would make that as part of your first line of defense if a student isn't having, is already showing maybe five or six days in this, of this school. We also were able to have one of our coordinators become a licensed youth mental health first aid trainer. And she provided professional development to anyone who'd like to attend. So using the funds, the student or the teacher could have a guest instructor in their classroom and come on over to bliss and have a day of learning. Youth mental health first aid is a large-scale training. It's standardized and it helps staff understand, what can you do kind of in the name of to support somebody who might be going through some mental health struggles? Let's see, within the green file folder, we provided again, additional professional development and really took a look at what alternatives or more proactive methods do we have rather than relying on exclusionary discipline? So a focus has been on a variety of supports. Some of them have been specific to understanding students who have a first or second offense with vape or alcohol and other drugs. We really focused on the vape since that's been an area of weak, a big weakness in all of our schools and an ongoing plant, a problem. So within that program, families are offered the option that, yes, a suspension could be issued or we can take an alternate route. Your student can go through a variety of educational sessions with the school social worker that really targets education around the use of substances with the hope that with more education and more support, that we would have a reduction or no repeat office referrals within that area. So our social workers were able to learn different techniques and go through a standardized protocol for how to respond for students. We had staff attend the building of the hardest successful schools, which was a focus on our counselors and social workers to learn a variety of supports and interventions and ideas that they can design their programming to assist our students, as well as annual conferences for them to boost their skills. And finally, we had one of our student service coordinators trained as a restorative practice educator. Restorative practices as alternatives to, again, exclusionary disciplines such as suspensions. It's a very intensive training. It's two days. So we worked very hard to make sure we didn't have them two days back to back because that's very hard for buildings to have their staff out for two days in a row. So what we did is we spaced those out to reduce that barrier and hopefully increase our attendance. And we've had good attendance at all of those sessions and we'll continue to offer that next year. In the last file folder, we were able to provide staffing to reduce barriers to learning, which can come in many forms. Sometimes that's clothing, sometimes that's transportation, sometimes it's food, sometimes it's resources. So we were able to keep on staff several social workers who without this funding would be part-time. So we were able to keep them as full-time. And then we were also able to employ an AmeriCorps School Social Work Assistant. She was staffed at our high school at Spatch and worked very hard to decrease those barriers. I know some of you got to see some of our highlights in the board docs over the year. She did things like a school clothing drive and has really helped to reach out to students who need small group instruction or again, access to different things within our community. So that was our overall plan that we delivered through CCEIS. And so next wanted to address our second report that's issued right at the same time. We get to take a look at how are we doing on those state performance indicators? It provides statistics to us. And again, follows the different measurable deliverables from IDVA. Within our joint federal notification packet, we're given information on how we're doing overall with a percentage score. And then we're giving scores on each specific indicator. The final scores are a variety of weights and percentile ranks within that. Overall, they do a weight of both compliance. So that's things like feeding deadlines, turning in things correctly, and then results, which are actual outcomes of how students are doing. Our overall score was a 76. To not be in need of assistance or in need of improvement, you'd be looking at having a score of 80. So we're close, but we do have areas that we need to focus on regardless. Let's see, our compliance score and our results score, we do get a separate percent for each of those. So you can take a look at what's your area of strength and weakness. So our compliance score was 100%. So that's an area of significant strength within our district. And results is the area where we need to focus the most on with a final score of 52.44%. Let's see, within our report, we're given information on a variety of outcomes for students. And it's everything from graduation rates, assessment participation and performance, inclusive practices, discipline and timely evaluations. And on our state performance indicators, just remember that all this data is data specific to our students with IEPs. Indicators in need of most priority within our district would be improving our ability for students within kindergarten through age 21 to have a more increased access to the general ed environment. Right now, our educational environments indicate that compared to what's expected and within the state, we're much more below the average rate. And so increasing inclusive practices, co-serving, and different models such as using more accommodations and modifications within the classroom would need to be looked at. Math and ELA assessment participation and on-time graduation. So that's a regular diploma within four years. Isn't area, are two areas in need of improvement as well as ELA or reading proficiency. As I said, our district performs very well on many indicators. And I put into what I thought was maybe a little more digestible, a strength and weakness table. So again, within our strengths, we have so many strengths taking a look at our compliance areas. And again, there were no areas in need of improvement for compliance indicators. For strengths, we do very well, as I spoke about within our disproportionality report, that we don't have discrepant discipline for students overall of all disabilities. We also don't have disproportional placement identification or discipline for all special ed categories, just the one specific that we talked about. Our preschool transitions are happening on time. So our little guys who are rising up from birth to three are having that seamless transition into our preschool program. Any non-compliance is corrected immediately within our system. And our POCs secondary plans, which are plans that we write for students starting at 14 as part of their IEP are turned in and done with compliance. Those plans really help students identify early on, what's your plan when you're done here at our schools? What are you thinking about? And that can go anywhere from schooling afterwards all the way to, to care plans. Let's see, areas of strength within results. So that was the area where we had the 52.44%, I believe it was. Overall, we don't have a significant amount of students who are dropping out from our system. We have IEPs, which is very good. Of course, we don't want students leaving without a diploma. We want them to finish, finish with us. Our math proficiency and then our ability to have our little guys, so ages three to five, in a pretty inclusive environment. As I've talked about, the green bar would be the areas in most need of improvement for results. A different way to look at those would be some different graphs that our report provides to us. Sometimes seeing them in a different way, I think sometimes helps us understand where are we at right now and where do we need to grow the most? So the first graph indicator one is graduation. Right now, we have a point score of one. Two would be the maximum score and zero would be the minimum score. So we're in the middle. So an area of growth would be working on making sure that our students with IEPs are graduating on time in four years with a regular diploma. The next two graphs are participation in state assessments. So that's just completing that exam. It's not the score you receive on the exam. So that one speaks to some mindset shifts that we, that need to take place. Sometimes you might hear individuals think that perhaps that assessment isn't helpful for students with IEPs. But we would say that it's very helpful. We want to know how they're doing. We want to see if they're growing. And it includes all assessments, even our alternate state assessments. So all students have an assessment that they can show growth on. And that's decided on through their IEP. So encouraging and working on a mindset that we do want everyone to show their skills and to be able to sit for that assessment and complete that would be an area of performance growth for both math and ELA. For the graph on the left, within this screen, would be improvements or where we are currently for point performance on ELA proficiency. This year is the first year that we've had it disaggregated by level or grade. In the past, it was just one point score for the whole district. So of course, that's helpful to be able to pinpoint where do you want to work most or what, what levels need the most support? So within our elementary and our high school, they each received one raw point and the middle had a two. But overall, it looks like mostly our high school would be an area to focus on for those ELA and reading skills. And I will talk about things that we've been doing to support these needs in it. Our last area of performance indicator on the right would be our area in most need of focus within our district. I believe I presented back in October or November on inclusive practices and how that relates to educational environments within our schools. So again, this one's a mindset that our students with IEPs should be within the general education setting and that there are accommodations, modifications and supports that can come to them rather than always having to be removed. And right now, that's our area in most need of improvement compared to the other two LEAs or districts within the state, which is what that curve is. You can see we're falling on the tail end at the 8th percent half. So really working to boost that would be the goal. We've been providing a wide variety of supports to increase our state performance indicators and will continue to next year. So I tried to put the best of the best up here, but there's even more things that we've been doing that I've been writing some notes on that I wanted to make sure I highlighted for all of you. On the blue file folder, we of course have been looking at and our interventions and our supports and our teaching methods. So are we using current curriculum, current materials, things that are of So are we using current curriculum, current materials, things that are of high leverage or high outcomes for our students with IEPs specifically? Within literacy, we've been using a collection of interventions that have listed up there, especially with a focus on science of reading, as you've heard a lot about this year with Act 20. So UFLI, Wilson Reading Integrity, Rewards, Readopia. And next year, we'll have access to that CKLA intervention kit, which we're excited about. So beefing up literacy instruction and options for our teachers to really match students' needs. In math, we've been doing the same. Some of it has been, are we using some of our current interventions to fidelity? Which would be the Bridges Intervention Kit and the Math Expressions. And then starting next year, along with a little pilot that we've done this spring, has been bringing MathUSee into the district. And MathUSee is a program that allows students to make rapid growth and have mastery as well as brings in a lot of visuals and videos. We've been using that at our junior high school and high and our teachers who are kind of our math gurus are very excited about that. They felt like it's been able to help them differentiate and meet students' needs even within our small groups. And the last one on their equals math, we have really not had a math resource for our teachers who work with our students with the most significant intellectual disabilities. For the most part, they've been thinking and borrowing and making up great things, but certainly those students and teachers deserve a clear curriculum as well. So that will be equals math. Within social emotional learning, we've been focused on a variety of paths and supports. Of course, Character Strong Tier Two and Three is often a support that is leveraged within special education. We've also implemented PASS, which is Positive Approach to Student Success. And if you've heard at all about Roosevelt, they've really been our trailblazer for that program. It's an evidence-based program for individuals who have emotional behavioral disabilities. And it works on providing them like a boot camp experience that's intensive for a couple of weeks. And then rather than staying in a removed setting, which frequently happens, they're out in the general setting, but they have frequent monitoring. And they work really hard at different reward boards and targets and replacement behaviors. It has allowed us to reduce one-on-one aids at Roosevelt, which is really exciting. We've also been leveraging a variety of instructional materials. You can see within the three bullets there, some of them have been more print resources for our teachers and some of them even have some fun names. Our Behavior Management Hundred Problems, Five Hundred Plans has been a new resource for our teachers as well as Everyday Speech, which helps teach some of those social skills. And Strong Kids, which also teaches social emotional behavioral skills. Within professional development, we've been targeting a wide variety of things. Some of these are targets for this current year and then some of them will be provided next year. For example, FBA training will be in September of next year. CPI and some of those supports are ongoing. We have been able to participate, I believe I put it in several of our board updates, a grant from the DPI for any teacher who's on a license with stipulation. They can participate in a fully funded master's program through UW-Watewater, including residency to get their full license in special education. So just some really good PD that we've been bringing into our department as well as ongoing work with CISA to take a look at what can we do to improve our practices. And the last is that we've been really working hard to take a look at access and other supports that can assist our students within the classroom. Things like audiobooks, different visuals like TouchMath and AlexMath are some of those softwares and different hands-on strategies that we're excited for. Even some AI has been helpful for our teachers to hone in on goals and writing social skills stories. And last, we've been looking at a partnership with Midstate Independent Living Choices. They offer a variety of courses and supports right within our community and they're very interested in helping us with real life skills like self-advocacy and personal relationships and are excited to offer those to our students within our high school and junior high. Let's see, a few things I don't want to forget is that we've also focused on bringing special ed interns into the district. Interns can teach half the time on their own, so that's allowed us to have staff who hopefully we can recruit and retain within our district, but also more hands and more people to provide interventions. We've had an at-risk team this year who's really looked at students who are at risk for things like not graduating or dropping out and what can we do to improve that system? We've collaborated with the RVA on making sure that students are taking that state test and making sure that they're providing incentives, which they are, for students to come in and test. We've also sent staff, had them travel to see our students who are placed off-site, such as at a day treatment, to make sure that they're still able to take the state test. And lastly, we've applied for a grant. We were moved on to the second rounds of interviews, so cross your fingers for us. And if we do get that grant, it will provide $56,000 annually for three years to help us take a look at how can we improve social emotional behavior outcomes for students with autism and emotional behavioral disabilities in schools. So hopefully we'll get some good news at the end of the month on that grant. So overall, I know that's a lot of information. Hopefully it was helpful to all of you to hear about what we've been doing to support kids, both with IEPs and to help prevent that need as well. Happy to take any questions if I have.
The risk ratio, the one that went to 2.5. I assume that a risk ratio of zero is where we would like to be used, but what is like the cutoff in terms of this is an acceptable risk ratio?
Sure, the ideal risk ratio would be one, that there's no difference between any race category compared to another, that it's equal and the same. That for one student who's of one race compared to another student of one race, we'd have 1:1.
And then with the report on JNFP?
Yes.
Says Stephen's point is needs assistance here is two plus. So I said that we've been in this category for more than two years and we're at 76% now. What were we at prior to that? Have we been making progress?
Yes, the year before, we were at 75%. So we went off a percent, which is good. In a big district, it's a large marker to make. But yes, it's been at more than two years on those areas of focus. And when I take a look at the reports over time, it's the same areas of focus that really need us to come together and bridge supports, especially in that inclusive environments for students with IEPs. Thank you for your question. Tim, you want to go G first, Tim, then Jim?
I'm not going to read the brief.
Oh, go ahead.
And I was looking at the, how this all works and looking at some of the state regulations stuff. There was a section in there about flagging kids and reporting it and then you got to put it into the WISE data. How much of that are we really doing? And what is the reporting process of that if we are? And how much are parents involved? And is this a potential FERPA issue or not?
For flagging students, I guess I'm not quite sure. Do you mean like our tracking for early intervention services?
There was multiple areas there that they would flag kids and then it said it was reported to WISE data.
Sure.
Some of it was all IEP kids, some of it was other issues.
Yeah, so I'll do my best and then if Cory wants to jump in, that'd be great too. So yes, every night, all of our data syncs up with the WISE, which is the DPI system for data. So they look at all of the data that we're asking for, whether it's educational environments, what's a student's disability code, all of that's through a secure portal. So Cory approves anybody who would be able to view that data. So it's basically administrators here at Bliss. It's not something that anybody else could log in and take a look at, like they couldn't type in my name and take a look at my IEP or my EE code or my discipline. The DPI does, but we're required to turn in that data for students.
That's exactly what I was going to say. There are certain things that DPI will report publicly on, which they can, but most of that information is all secure and we would only have a small number of people that have access to it.
Like for example, in the district and then the building report cards, they'll report percent of students with IEPs. So they would take that number of students in the building, number of students with IEPs and report that statistic, but of course, it doesn't come down to their name or their grade or their family.
So it's general information? Or you said that it doesn't have a name or a family on it or what?
For the public viewing.
Oh, I got it. But and then when it does go to the, are you, are the parents, the last part of my question, was the parents involved? You tell them that this is happening, do they know this is going on? Are they worried this just happened because it's a state thing and you're not telling a parent? Do they know?
So whether or not?
And can they say, hey, I don't need my data going anywhere? Are they allowed to say no to that?
It's data that helps us understand our system, but there isn't a permission form for that.
I don't know if parents have the right to opt out of that, but let me check into that, Jim.
They don't.
We're not required to get consent for that. There's a school official exemption to FERPA that allows us to code data.
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you.
Because we want good data, right? Like if a big chunk of students had no data reporting, we wouldn't be able to make good decisions.
Can we back up a couple of slides? Go back till we get to the JFNP slide. Okay, there, the back one, there. The second bulleted item there, can you explain, our district compliance score is 100%. That looks good to me. The results score is 52.44%. Is that a good score or a bad score?
I don't love that score. I want to see that improved. In general, I would want both scores to be at that 80% or more because that's the overall percent benchmark they've set. So they don't explicitly say that, but if that's the overall expectation, that's where I would want that eventually to be.
Is that 76% number that you gave us, is that a combination of those two?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not where we want to be?
In the results, you got it.
Okay, then can you go forward a couple of slides? The next one, there. I saw this slide before, I can't remember where.
Last one there.
And Services, in October. In October, I presented on inclusive practices and how we're doing in that area, least restrictive environment, yep.
That's where I remember this from. And I get a theme as you go through this. And just to back up a little bit, I asked one of our, I asked Chris a couple of years ago, I said, would you characterize us as an inclusive district? And he says, the data says no. And he showed me this. And we're not inclusive according to this. And I think everybody would say it's a good idea to be more inclusive, to be not at the tail end of that mountain, but to be somewhere in the middle.
Yes.
Why aren't we? What, what? And if we're not, and if you would agree that that's not a good place to be, I don't want you to detail what we're doing right now to, to move us into a better spot. But is there some time in the future that you could give us a report? Because to me, this, this stands out more than anything else in your report as, plus, plus the two, no, the, the previous slide where we have zero points for?
Participation in state assessment.
Why aren't we? I mean, that's, and obviously, your work is, you're wrestling with that.
Absolutely. And like I said, I feel like a lot of that is that mindset or a deficit mindset that students with IEPs shouldn't have to take it or that it's not helpful and?
But who decides that?
Yeah, so parents can opt children out of the state assessment, so?
Do, do staff opt them out?
No, parents.
Just parents? So parent, you're asking parents of these students if they would like to take this assessment?
Our expectation is that everyone takes it, but if they communicate to us, I don't want my child taking the ACT, I don't want my child taking dynamic learning maps, we have to follow that. However, we would say, we, we want them to have the opportunity to take that assessment. So that is a hard one. You're right, you know, where some of that control isn't within our control. But it's education on a deficit mindset thinking, that assessments and measuring progress is something that we want all students to be able to participate in.
So do you have, or staff have ideas to either why they're opting out or convince parents that it's a good thing for the students?
Yeah, individual discussion, I'd say is the most powerful. Some of them have even been individual phone calls. And have you thought about it this way? Have you considered this? You know, and even offering to take it in a separate setting if it's maybe high levels of test anxiety. Or as you heard about with SPAC, we worked really hard to have an off-site testing center because taking a test with accommodations has a level of stigma with it, that a high school student isn't always willing to say, I'll combat that today and stick around and take it for additional days to get my 300%. That's very hard for a teenager to want to say, yes, I want to do those things. So making sure that we're providing accommodations and that we're encouraging students to actually take advantage of those. And that has required some really hard thought. And for SPAC, for example, we decided to partner with the Boys and Girls Club and we offered it off-site, we provided food and snacks and lots of positive reinforcement, that you can do that. And as Jeff talked about, we did see that rise in their ACT performance this year.
Yeah, I mean?
You have them just showing up and taking that, which sounds so simple and yet it's an area in need of mindset shift.
Well, it's, I mean, it's one thing, would you explain, but, but we're not near the state average. And so other school districts must be doing something to, to either convince or encourage students and their parents to take the test that either we're not doing or doing differently. So I would be kind of interested in your plans on how to, to increase that. And if you can go forward to the next slide, that, that one graph, I, like I said, I've seen that more than a week ago.
Yep, yep, we talked about it in October.
And I looked at it and it just, I couldn't get it out of my head, it is like, whoa. All right, I go into a lot of schools.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, if I'm talking to a special ed student teacher, ask what their schedule is and if they're sitting all day with two or three students coming in their room every 30 minutes, that's non-inclusive, that's exclusive. And I've been in schools where they try very hard to, to include and in planning, to include students in the general ed environment. And it takes a lot of work and it's not easy. Sometimes you get resistance, but apparently, we're, we're not there. And I would be interested in if it's okay, if I ask for you to maybe delineate some of the things that you're doing to, to try to move us on that curve.
Yeah, and I, and I would say pretty much every bullet on these file folders, to some extent, address that. And it's a collection of things. I wish there was one thing I could put in place, but for example, PASS. And if anyone would love to borrow a book, I'd love to have you read it. It's a, it's an evidence-based program for students with emotional behavioral disabilities because if you look at data, those are students who are most frequently out of the general ed setting more than in. So it's a systemic problem with not just in the point schools, in many schools. And so it's a very systemic approach for providing a high level of, kind of they call it boot camp. So a very high level of dose of specially-designed instruction upfront on things like executive function, focused attention practices, self-regulation, behavior management. And what do you want to work for and what do you replace some of those behaviors with? What's the alternative to that? And then very quickly, the students are back in the general ed setting and sometimes down to every three minutes, we're checking, how are you doing? How are you doing? And it has a whole token system. So that'd be one example.
I would take exception to one thing you said, that it's not just a problem in the point system, it's a problem in lots of systems. No, they're better. Most systems are better than this. So we are, we do have a, a overriding theme of exclusivity somewhere. And I would say, from my experience, a person in your position can, can advocate for inclusivity for students with IEPs. But sometimes it comes down to individual schools where I see a student, a student teacher with a cooperating teacher that has decided this is the way we're going to do it.
So, so maybe this is something, G, that we could bring to Ed Services? And it sounds to me like? And it sounds to me like it might be helpful to bring in a couple of our staff members who are directly, maybe someone. Ask about, maybe, but maybe we can get this on an Ed Services agenda as we move into the fall to have a conversation. Because I think we've seen, I'm just going to make this comment. I mean, over the course of this last year or so, we have really been working to change culture within our schools about the importance of testing, both with respect to the people who work for us, as well as for parents. And it sounds like this is an additional area where it is essential that we are all speaking with one voice about the importance of testing, the importance of inclusion, but also the importance of working with the students in a focused way to be able to help support them in the classroom, as well as to be able to support their fellow students.
And Jenny and her team, as well as Chris and Jeff, with principals and teachers are working really, really hard at this. And it's not going to happen overnight, it's going to take some time. But there are some real positive things in movement to celebrate here. And, G, there are a slew of things that we're working to try to address this and will continue to do. But we could provide Ed Services most definitely with an update in the fall of specific things that we'll work on next year.
I think so. Because that particular, I mean, you mentioned testing, okay, we talked about that. But this chart is Ed, what's it say? Ed Environment six through twenty-one. And I would imagine this chart indicates, it measures how much time in the general ed setting as opposed to how much time off the general ed setting.
Yeah, it measures the.
We are woefully inadequate there.
Yep, that measures the percent of students with I E Ps who are in a general ed setting, eighty percent or more of the day. So most of the day. For example, if you're at S P A S, if you have two courses that are in a special ed setting, you're already at the next level of code. So it's really thinking hard about how do we serve students and how does our schedule work? One item I forgot to put on there, or maybe it's on there, is we've worked with C I S A about really smart scheduling. Because you might think some of its, a lot of its mindset, but some of it's also more practical things, like, did we schedule really well? And we found some areas of gaps that we've already put in place with our assistant principals who do scheduling to do that differently for next year.
And I think it's important to note that some students shouldn't be in the classroom that amount of time because of the distractions that they are causing other students, and it's not the least restricted environment for them. So I think, I think we need to continue to work on this, but sometimes that just isn't an appropriate place for them.
I fully acknowledge that, but that would put us in the big.
Yep.
Top of the mountain as the median of all the schools in state. We're not close, so we need to, that needs to change. And I know it's going to take a lot. I know you can't just take kids and throw them in and say, we're there.
Right.
Okay, but it hasn't changed. And I would like to say, I would like to listen at an Ed Service meeting of the things you do. And I would like to see this chart again in a year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or before that.
Well, like I said, I saw it last October or something, so maybe we can see this chart again next October at Ed Services meeting.
Definitely.
Because that one concerns me more than any of the other things you said.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, G. Thank you, Jenny. Any other questions?
I just want to note that, you know, we are a district, we're a large district. We have a lot of opportunities for families. And so I take a look at the graduation in four years on time. We actually have some of our programs that allow students, because of unique situations with family, with experience, with life, to be able to stay within our district and maybe graduate a little bit later. So I guess I just want to ensure, you know, as we're, as we're, and I totally agree with you of the need to improve, but I think ultimately, it's just fundamentally important that we're, that we are continuing to focus on students and the unique circumstances and what they, and what they need to get that diploma, to get that education, to get that diploma in whatever form that is the best for them. And that, that's actually a strength, I think, for our district that we have that ability and opportunity for kids and families. So we can't just say that.
I don't know how you can say that's a strength, but we're way at the tail end.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the inclusive environment, G, I'm talking about the.
On-time graduation.
Sometimes the on-time graduation, the opportunity to work with kids. So I think it's just important that we don't chase the numbers and hurt the kids, right? Make sure we give them what they need, right?
Yeah, good point. Yeah, we certainly, absolutely continue to provide those beyond eighteen programs to, they're not going anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on general climate survey results. Sarah.
Just working, Sarah.
I'm trying not to break give us.
Well, if you do.
I know, we've got Brian.
We've got Brian, Alan.
All right. You may recall, we have not done climate surveys for, we've skipped a couple of years. So we've brought those back in-house, we did both staff and family, so very similar to what we had been doing in the past, but really trying to focus on insights that we can work on and perhaps can be included as you had in your retreat as well. So looking first at our staff survey methodology and participation. We had six hundred and seventy-eight staff members complete the survey. That is lower by about a hundred from the last time that we did the survey through school perceptions. Part of that is they had a way, they were kind of tracking who had taken it, not taken it. I don't have that capability, we're not tracking in that way, so I'm just sending out reminders instead of hounding folks a little more than we used to. We did distribute electronically via district email, so anyone with a district email received the survey and had the opportunity to take it. And then those folks were self-reporting. So staff roles and buildings are all self-reported, and then that's what we use to group the results and disaggregate by roles where we felt was appropriate. Every survey has limitations. The ones that I would identify for these surveys would be its voluntary participation. And sometimes when we have voluntary participation, folks with really strong opinions that are really positive or really strong opinions that might be negative may be overrepresented in those results, so just something to keep in mind. Variability in response rates, not so much an issue at a district level, but for our building leaders that are looking at these results. Some had higher rates of participation, some had lower rates. Obviously, with those lower rates, somebody who may have a really strong experience that they shared is really going to skew those results, kind of like we saw happen with the board survey. This is perception-based data, so this is really how people felt at a point in time when they answered the survey. Role and building contexts were provided for those individual reports as needed. And then objectivity. So I'm the one that did the analysis, right? It's just me looking at it. So I do my very best to remain objective, but I feel like it's important to point out that, you know, it's coming from, calls coming from inside the building. That said, taking a look at our key findings across the dimensions that I felt were really important for us to take a look at. Building leadership had an average score of three point seven. Again, this is on that scale of one to five, one being they strongly disagree, five being they strongly agree. So three is right in that middle of kind of neutral. So building leadership, we see moving just a little bit to that agree. District leadership, same thing, that average score across all respondents was three point three. For work environment, we see that go up a bit to three point nine. And school culture was also at a three point nine. So those are our two strongest. When we get to really looking at the thematic themes within the open responses and the comments, we'll really see school culture come out pretty strong. Areas for attention that I see coming out of this piece of the survey is student behavior and discipline was frequently cited across all buildings. So it may be a lack of perceived, like maybe not handling things the same way for each time for the same students. It may be a lack of communication in how discipline may have been handled, really consistency training and support, I think. So that is certainly for someone else to dig into, it's not my area of expertise of really what's going on there. If that's something that, just sort of how we address that, but that is something we see coming through at all buildings. Relevant professional development also came through. Specifically, teachers and educational assistants really were looking for meaningful professional development that they felt really tied back to the work that they were doing. Some suggestions in there were training on behavior, trauma-informed practices, and inclusive strategies. Not saying that we're not already doing those things, again, that's just what's coming through in those, in those comments. And then role-based perception gaps. We did see a gap between, like, teachers and A's consistently had lower satisfaction rates than our support staff, clerical staff, transportation staff. That's a much larger group of folks, so that could be something that is affecting those scores, but felt that it was important to be pointed out. And again, just some opportunities there, maybe for targeted engagement strategies, voice and inclusion. I pushed the button. There we go, I thought I pushed the button. Areas of strength, it's that positive school culture and relationships. This is not surprising if you were with us when we were doing the surveys in the past. This is typically one that comes through as very strong. A high agreement for staff that they feel welcomed and supported. And lots of positive comments about positive team dynamics within the buildings. So culture within buildings is very strong and generally positive. We saw higher responses for clerical and support staff satisfaction, which is good to see. You may remember, again, a couple of years ago, support staff specifically was really struggling as we were just coming out of COVID. So I think that's positive to see that change. And then we saw site-specific, bright spots, bliffs, support services, transportation. Again, those are very small representations, but felt it's important to point out. Moving into that open-ended feedback, so this would be the comments. So we went through and worked to categorize them. So we had a hundred and sixty-four comments that really were very general, kind of uncategorizable. They were a little, you know, maybe talked about something over here and then something over there. So those we just left, kind of general. In my view, that means, it's a show that we have a wide variation of experiences across the district that we are just seeing some things come through that aren't replicable, right? They're not coming through strong enough to create their own theme, but they are happening. Student behavior and discipline was the top mention that was, you know, something that we could really respond to. We could say this is a theme for sure within these comments. So we saw a hundred referencing those. Resources and professional development was at fifty-five, culture and relationships at fifty-three, and building leadership at fifty. Again, you'll see those, those all kind of bunched together nicely, really leaving that student behavior and discipline as an outlier on its own, yeah. So with this, we just kind of talked about, I don't have to redo this slide. This would be the positives within the thematics, I will just pause here for a moment. When we talk, you know, it's easy to talk, I think, about those areas of growth, but really taking a moment to highlight the positive things as well. And it really was, you know, it's those relationships they have in their building. So expressions of gratitude and support for their colleagues and teams that they're working with, appreciation for leadership that communicates transparently and listens, recognition of their efforts that they are making. They are working really, really hard, which we all know, but I think it's one thing to say it here and we all know it, and another thing to meaningfully reach out and let that known that we see that. Positive statements about relationships with students and the joy of teaching. And I've just got some examples there from the comments. Insights that I think we can see coming out of there, staff are deeply committed to students and their work. Not a surprise, but you know, something that we definitely want to see coming out of that survey. And I'm really excited to see coming out of that survey. And I think what that means is we can really anchor our professional culture and the efforts we want to make towards changing or improving or putting strategic initiatives in place. That's a place we can anchor that connection to really address those challenges collaboratively. Building leadership practices, we see as generally strong. There are some experiences that vary by site. Again, what I think that means is there's an opportunity to look at maybe some leadership development and fostering those shared expectations. So we have some leaders that we know do that really, really well. Is there a way to kind of capture what they're doing in a more systemic way that could be shared with others across the district? So not only staff have a more uniform experience with leadership, but families would as well. District leadership is the lowest rated theme across the district. We typically are. I think that gives us a really clear opportunity to improve that trust and transparency with staff at a building level. That could be through two-way communication, clear explanation of decision-making. You know, as I start to kick around strategies, like I'm thinking it could even be like a very low-produced, you know, not like one of the nice newsletters we do, but like, seriously, here's a bulletin of things that are happening and why. It's something that feels and is much more personal and much more timely. Workload and staffing remain central challenges. I don't think that's surprising. We are asking staff to do more with less. We have been, I think, every year since I've worked here, it's very, it's difficult, right? So I think there are spaces in there to look again at, you know, are there ways that we can protect that planning time? Really making sure that schools are thinking long-term about that satisfaction and retention of staff. We, I think we have made significant improvements in roads, like I've seen a definite shift. I think there's always opportunities to continue in that way. I can pause here for staff, or we can keep going to your family.
Do board membership, let's talk about, do board members have any questions about this?
Doing it district, like comments about district leadership, I think that'd be helpful for the board.
The only issue.
Like, because we have to review, well, especially.
Those are used for evaluative purposes, so we don't share specific comments, but we do just the themes that Sarah pulls out of there.
I'm just thinking, like, when we're doing your review, it's helpful to know what staff are saying, what families are saying for your review, even if we don't see what Sarah's or Jeff's or Chris's state.
I would be comfortable with comments pertaining to me to be pulled, but I don't feel comfortable with other staff, just because we do use those for evaluative purposes. And if that had to come before the board, you would have to take action on that, but I'm fine with mine if you do that.
I'll go back through this.
Not, I'm not trying to call you off, but it's just nice.
Absolutely. No, I'm good with that.
Well, and I can also say, generally speaking, and I don't know if there are just more questions in there, but district administration has been low, but the board has been lower. So, so, so I don't know.
I did not have any questions for the board in there this year. Corey and I were looking at, over the results. I'm just saying. Of those different areas, and I did realize, you know, survey design is a science all into its own and you get a little better every time you do it. But looking at it, I don't think I had enough questions relative to district leadership either, which I don't really think affected the score. But it was very vague and difficulty, like it would be hard to pinpoint down specifically what that issue is. So that's an improvement we can make next year.
Yep.
And we can always add the school board back in.
Let's do it.
All right, we'll move on then to the family survey. So family survey methodology was identical to what we did for staff. We had one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight respondents. Again, this was about a hundred light compared to what we've had in the past. I will take that for families, I think this is the more difficult group to get to respond. Same limitations that we had on the other survey. Here, when we look, we see slightly higher responses, which is not surprising. Typically, families are very happy with district, very happy with staff. We see school leadership score at a three-nine-four, district leadership at a three-six-five. The student experience is the highest. This is, I will remind you, the parents' perception of the students' experience. So we did not specifically survey students to take that into consideration. That's at a four-one-two. And then academic expectations are at a three-seven-nine. That also includes like readiness for whatever comes next for their students after high school. Insights, and I wrapped our comments into the insights for this one. I felt that was just more effective for families because their experiences did not vary as much and were. because their experiences did not vary as much and were much, their standard deviation was a lot tighter. So they are having a much similar, I think, experience across, at least when we break it out by like elementary experience, secondary experience. So families really appreciate caring staff and safe, welcoming environments. Kind of obvious, right? Like, of course, we would like that. But not just that they like that, they are feeling that they are receiving that in this district. So that's the really important part there. They're really connecting deeply with staff that they have here, whether that's teachers or EAs or bus drivers. And their children are feeling safe and happy when they're coming to school. What this means, obviously, that district and staff relationships are of course strength for the district and should be celebrated and build again on that foundation. So we have staff that feel really engaged and connected to their work. And we have families that feel really engaged and connected to staff. So that's a big positive to take away from these two. Communication is a strength, but consistency and responsiveness vary. So we saw a lot of comments about communication, mostly at a school level. A lot of it's really positive. Some of it is, you know, my student used to be at this school and now they're at this school and we got this communication at this level, I'm not getting this communication at this level. So there, I think it's an alignment issue in communication practices. Again, just taking, here are some of our best practices, maybe expectations. We've not done that with schools before. But here's kind of that bare minimum we expect for communication with families. Families want more academic challenge and differentiation. Difficult to do, but certainly this is something that we're hearing. This came through in this survey and then I believe it's coming through in, I won't say, I think there's another survey where we will see similar results. So families are eager to see more opportunities for all learners, including those not receiving intervention services. So really, families that are feeling that their students may be in that average or just above average place really feel like they're not getting the challenges that they look like academically. Now, the final insight from families was concern about class sizes, behavior, and follow-through. So here's when we see that behavior piece come through from families as well. They are also looking for clearer behavior expectations, just information about what's happening in the classroom as well. And then really focusing on that safety for classroom and schools. Next steps, as you consider results for the survey, school leaders have received their site-specific reports with insights very similar to what the district report is and was for both staff and families. And they'll be reviewing those individually and together to look at those trends. District leaders have also received those reports and will look at how any insights may or may not support ongoing efforts for continuous improvements. And then they are certainly at the disposal of the board as you head into your retreat to consider how those insights may impact goal-setting for the upcoming school year. Unless there are questions on family survey.
Yeah.
I know the answer is probably no because I get we have to split it across buildings. But is there any way we can make families not have to take this survey four times or three times or two times? Because full disclosure, you did not get four survey responses from my household.
I would say yes, but not cheaply. So this doesn't cost us anything but my time. So we're not, you know, we're using Wall and whatever generally pay for Google. We're just using mobile phones, right? So it's a very basic way. I can look into different options that may still be free, yeah.
Could you just click, like, have one of the questions be like, my kids attend X, Y, Z on it?
We could.
Although their feelings towards one building is very different.
They're differentiating the comments.
Even if
For McKinley, McKinley is the
That would be harder to disaggregate. I've done surveys like that.
Well, it would be more, it would be more arduous, assuredly, but
I wouldn't even mind doing it four times if it was like a single page.
In one. Yeah, what I'm wondering is if there's a way that we can lead you through, like, so you, I mean, like when surveys tree, like not to get too
Oh, yeah, like this, now, and the next.
Right, but now this, and then you go here, and then you have here, yeah.
We can look into it.
Okay, yeah. I do agree that would probably increase overall response. Because I was glad, I'm down to one in the system, so I only had to do it.
I would say I totally like the behavior issues is by far the biggest thing I've heard for multiple families with multiple types of, like, multiple children of different backgrounds. There's a consistent problem. I don't even know if it's a problem, but it is a perception that there's like a lack of follow-through. And I know that we do, but they don't see that happening. And I know we can't like share if it happened, right? But is there a way that we can better communicate that, yes, when you do report something, it is followed up on? Is there a better way you can do that? Like, that would help a lot with that because I know we do. And it's just when parents don't hear anything back, they don't feel like anything happened.
Sure, parents and staff, I would say, we are that way. So yes, we can get better at that. And we'll look at ways that we can improve proactive communication as well as after the fact. Even though if we don't tell them everything, at least just having that conversation, this was followed up on, parents have been contacted, or whatever happens.
Yeah, but that'd make people feel better.
Absolutely.
Perceptions are reality.
Yes. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right. We are moving into future meeting dates and times. We've got the board retreat on June thirtieth at MSTC. And then we've got potentially a July fourteenth regular school board meeting, although we typically don't have that meeting. So anyway, I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second. So moved. You guys are like, do one in the esprit. What are you doing, Nicole? All those in favor of I?
I am.
I, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.